I'm Eze. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here and welcome. This is the regular city council meeting Tuesday, January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, the city of Rockport. It is six-thirty, and we will call this meeting session. Would you join us for the pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Brundrett?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Father, who hath given us one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll have roll call to establish a quorum. Ward one.
Present.
Ward two, not present yet. Ward three?
Here.
Ward four?
Here.
Mayor, here. Next item on the agenda is citizens to be heard. At this time, comments limited to three minutes will be taken from the audience from persons who have signed the speaker's card located at the table in the back of the training room of the service center and delivered to the city secretary before the meeting begins. Our written comments received by four P M. on the day of the meeting on an agenda item or any subject matter, they will be read and summarized in the minutes of the meeting. Persons wishing to address the council and who have registered using the citizen participation form will have up to three minutes to speak. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, council may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. While civil public criticism is not prohibited, disorderly conduct and disturbance of the peace are prohibited by law, shall be called for the chair to terminate the offender's time to speak. We will have a public hearing shortly, so if you're planning to speak on item eleven or twelve, we will do that at that time. Before that, we're good. Okay, next item on the agenda is consent agenda. All consent agenda? Is that a? Hers is on eleven. It's what she's talking about. Consent agenda items listed or considered to be routine by the city council will be enacted on one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Any council member wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? If not, do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion to prove it as?
Second.
I have a motion as second. Any further discussion or debate? If not, I call for a vote. Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two, three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Motion passes. I was asked by Councilman Brundrett shortly ago if we would move item number seventeen to the front so that we can get folks. We have got people that are part of a presentation to be made by the school district, and so we are going to move that to the first item on the regular agenda and let you all have time for the folks that are part of your presentation to make it. I have number one on that particular item to be Lacey Garza. If you'd come forward, come to the microphone, give your name and where you live and present as you will.
I am Lacey Garza. I reside at one-twelve Georgian Oaks, and I am a teacher at Rockport Fulton Middle School. These are some of my students, and they have been working on a service project, and they have some really great ideas that they want to share with you. We do have a slideshow presentation if we could use that. Okay, and I'm going to let them share their ideas with you.
My name's Ty.
My name's Jaden.
My name's Laura.
My name's Callie.
And this is our presentation to make stadium drive safer. Our safety concerns are that pedestrians and cyclists are trying to cross the road, but cars aren't stopping for them. Some pedestrians are having to run across the road, and the cyclists are having to quickly cross the road without getting hit. I've even observed a semi truck stopped in the middle of the road, stopping traffic and making cars having to go head-on into traffic to get around. Students are running across to get to the other side, as you can see in the picture. This is a picture of the semi truck stopped in the middle of the road, which is blocking buses and cars that need to go by. Here's a video. Here's an example of a safety hazard. This is a biker that is trying to cross the road, but no one is stopping for them. Possible solutions. Our possible solutions would be closing the road, placing down wide speed humps, lowering the current speed limit, using temporary road closure, adding more stop signs, placing a police officer out to conduct traffic, placing more streetlights or using a push button. This is, this is, was the proposed plan. Cost of speed humps. One thousand to two thousand pounds of asphalt are needed to make one speed hump. We would need about three to four speed humps. It will cost around two thousand dollars for each speed hump. Installing speed humps would reduce the odds of injury or death in children getting hit by a car by fifty-three to sixty percent. It's an example. Reducing the current speed limit. Current speed limit is thirty miles per hour and twenty miles per hour during drop-off and pickup. We want to reduce the speed limit to fifteen miles per hour at all times. Temporary road closure. Temporary close the road down with the crossing gate before the car had aligned and we could reroute traffic. A crossing gate would cost more but would be more efficient. One ten-foot magnetic crossing gate is about five thousand or more plus installment. We would need two sets to cover each lane of the road by the turn. As an alternative, our RF High School welding program could construct the crossing gates. Authorized personnel with IDs would be responsible for activating the crossing gates. Adding more streetlights. It's difficult for motorists and pedestrians to see when it is dark. Streetlights cost an average of two to three thousand dollars. Streetlights help light up the roads, making it safer for motorists and pedestrians. A push button. It could also be used by the public. There will be a timer to prevent overuse, possibly solar-powered, and could also be used in conjunction with crossing gate arm. Installing a push button with a sign is about one thousand two hundred fifty to five thousand five hundred dollars. These are just some examples from Gregory Fortland High School. That might be our judge. Thank you for your time.
City council members, mayor, I appreciate you guys giving us time to our students, and we'll have one more speaker to wrap this up, to bring awareness to an issue that students brought to us as district leaders. And so as our district, it's our job to prepare our students to become contributing members of our community, and I'd say that's a big first step, is coming to a city council meeting and presenting their research on a concern that they had, that they felt passionate about bringing to us, and we felt that that would be a great idea to bring to you as well. And so I cannot think of a better way to showcase our students than to have them bring these concerns before you. I hope there's, there's four things I just want to highlight real quick. Any design related to closing Stadium Drive would continue to allow first responder access. So if that is an option down the road right now or down the road, we would always make sure that we work with our first responders so they would have access to that. And it would also, if it's something that goes to the school district, of course, it being a part of the district would be a part of our district's facilities and operational costs and expenses. So you also heard other alternatives that were presented by our students, and those alternatives would need to be at the expense of the city. Our school district does not have, does not own Stadium Drive, nor do we have jurisdiction or control over the safety features on this roadway. So our taxpayer funds that we collect from a school district side have to target student education and also the safety of school-owned property. Today, you heard Stadium Drive needs, better lighting, clear signage, caution lights, slower speed limits, speed humps, and a few other items that they brought up. And so I hope that we can be proactive and do something we know needs to happen before something happens. Thank you.
Okay, look at these faces. How can you say no to keeping them safe, anyway? Thank you, city council members and mayor, for allowing the students of ACISD, soon-to-be RFISD, to voice their concerns and solutions for closing part of Stadium Drive. My name is Michaela Alston, and I am an ACISD trustee. As a school board member, it is our job and top priority to keep the students and staff of ACISD safe at all times, as is your responsibility as a city council member and mayor to keep the community members and those that visit Rockport safe. I believe that we can work together in finding a solution that best meets the needs and the safety concerns on both our side and yours. And I invite you guys to come and see, hear, and feel what it looks like driving down Stadium Drive. Our softball games, baseball games, football, there's so much traffic, both foot traffic and car traffic going back and forth. Lights would be a huge help to us. Speed bumps, reducing the speed, all of those things. And like Dr. Garcia said, we can only do so much on our end. And like we said, we don't own that road. You guys do. So anything you can do to help keep our students and staff and community members safe would be awesome. Thank y'all.
Council for any of these folks who've made presentation to us.
I just want to make a comment. Thank you for coming out. Go ahead. Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you.
This is soon to be heard. So I'm Deidra Amaya. I live at one-on-one Windcrest Lane. I'm the mother of Laura. I frequently drop off my girls at the middle school on rainy days and foggy days when it's dangerous for them to be out at the bus stop on their own. So I firsthand witness parents dropping off their kids, and it's like right when they pull out of, of, of the school, it's, they forget that everybody else has kids there, too. And people are not stopping for those kids trying to cross the road. They're speeding. They want to hurry up and get to Walmart down the road. It, it, it just, it's imperative that these dollars go towards the safety of our kids. So any safety features that you can add would greatly improve the, their safety and the look of Rockport also when these other school districts are coming and their kids feel safe in that area also, crossing the street for the tennis, for the tennis and safe ball tournaments and such. So, thank you.
Back real fast. We were going to kind of clarify the map. Also, do you mind switching back to that slide, just so that there you can kind of clearly see option A? Perfect, right there. So basically, for those that aren't familiar with this whole thing, we're talking about going off of Enterprise, turning right on Stadium Drive, just shy of Sunny Watkins, would be closing that access down right there. So we had our architectural firm right now that's working on our bond sketch something up for us. Can you scoot it up just a little bit? Sorry. Thank you. Okay, so right there, you can see that bottom part would have access for EMS to go through all of there. There would just be one little area that they would have access to. And then obviously, we talked to Ms. Vanessa about having the turnaround and whatnot from the other side. So we thought through all the process. If that road was to be fully shut down from Enterprise to Sunny Watkins, we thought through everything that would meet the city's needs on that and response times on it. So right there, to the right, between the, behind the baseball field, that solid strip would have full access for the EMS to go through. And then just, I guess, north of that is the Sunny Watkins turnaround. So that would, that would be option A, and ideal if we could have access to that. That, that would be a school district expense on that. Anything after that and not shutting down, we are asking that the city help us out on that. Is there anything? Sorry.
Y'all have any questions?
Dr. Garcia, question for you and forgive my ignorance. Have we started meetings between the two entities yet? Have y'all sat down?
Well, we've met a couple of times, just to discuss and the possibilities and the ideas that were out there related to the issue.
Okay, I, I know we've kind of considered this or talked about a little bit amongst ourselves, different entities. I think it's a great idea. I love the, the artist's rendering here. Do, I think the concerns would, would be good to come to staff between the two of y'all and then, and then let staff and, and everybody come up with some solutions and bring to us. I, I know we have utilities running down, so I don't know if a complete closure is possible.
I know there would be some grading because there's a lot of water that traverses through the roadway right now, you know, any, in a heavy rainstorm. So that was always something that, you know, we had to figure out, how do you, how do you control that water? So there definitely need to be some kind of work with engineers and other city folks to make sure that those, the water that's going through that road goes in the right exit pipes. I don't know. Sorry, city work is not my, there you go, drainage. City work is not my wheelhouse.
And I know that, from what I know, that we don't really like the road humps. Police and fire and EMS usually don't like the road humps because it tears, tears up everything. There are other, other options that y'all listed out there. I also want to commend the kids for the presentation. Y'all did a fantastic job. So thank you all very much.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. Just kind of back to, I do think that road is, there's a lot that can be done to help our students. I mean, I personally have a son and daughter that crossed that road multiple times, and there's been a couple close calls. And it just takes one kid. I don't care if there's any backstory or, you know, things happening. It just takes the one. So I would like to see the options. I don't, like again, like you said, we don't know if we can close the road, but maybe there's options that work for everyone that can help with the safety of our kids. So I do appreciate you guys coming out here and talking us out with this really important subject that needs to be handled. So, thank you.
One, one more thing, too. I just want to remember that it's important for us as a school district to always be proactive and not reactive in any situation. So going off of what you just said must happen on that is one hundred percent. We're trying to stay ahead of any kind of safety concerns that can happen, and this is one of those things that it's just going to take one second, and it will change everybody's lives.
I'm looking at this. I'm guessing that the ideal situation is that we vacate parts of stadium, about half of it along that stretch, after we determine rights away and pipes and drainage and blah, blah, blah. So would the, would the ideal situation be is that we install crosswalks, this, that, until all of that can happen?
I would say if you're going to go with the first choice, then you don't want to spend too much money on alternate options if we're going to go with the first choice.
But then the question?
If it's not a choice or if it's not a, if it's not an option, then you want to do the other thing, the crosswalk.
Well, the question being, if we were to vacate this tomorrow, how soon could you start building that? Exactly. So?
That would be something that we would work with our school board to get together on how we could.
I mean, I would.
Fund something, a project outside.
I wouldn't rather not. Well, okay, we vacated it, and nothing can be done for two years, so we just leave it as is?
So I would say, I would say based on how things are getting built and working on our bond process, it's probably a year, a year.
So we would need a stopgap between, well, basically today and whenever that project can be complete. Okay, thank you very much.
You can fund this through a current bond. You might have, it's not a future project.
This would not be a future project, and we would come up with the sources, whether it's, you know, bond-related or not. That would be something that we would have to do. But again, safety is number one. But I also think that if, even if this were to take a year to get fully done, there's things that we can do now with your permission to start getting, training people to go around the other way and start protecting those safety, you know, putting those safety measures in place. That may not cost a whole lot, but ultimately, obviously, option A is ideal. But again, we don't want you guys spending money if this is even an option.
Well, the thing is, is that if we were to buy a bunch of, of crosswalk flashers, you know, we, all of this gets done, then we pick them up and take them somewhere else.
Well, I can tell, true. And I can tell you that we installed the crosswalk, the little flasher lights, and it doesn't do anything. You still have people blowing through there all day long, you know? And so it's, it's really one of those things. It's retraining the community members to use the other access, and that's something we can start doing in the next, and, and, and EMT. I mean, it may just be putting cones down even at this point, you know? But it's one of those things, just trying to get everybody in the habit. And again, keeping our students safe is the number one thing. So.
Since this is not an agenda item, let me talk. Since this is not an action item on the agenda, I would want to recommend that we postpone this to our first regular council meeting in February and between now and then, that the police department and the public works department get together with these young people that made a very good presentation. And folks, I appreciate what y'all did. It's a little bit difficult to get up in front of a bunch of grouchy old people like us and talk. So I appreciate that. I would like to meet with y'all so that you can hear some of the concerns we have with, with a closed-down street, because I come from a police background, and fire trucks, police cars, ambulances, don't like speed humps. And if we move the street out so that they don't have access to that street, if an ambulance is coming from the regular place, they got to go to thirty-five to Colorado Street, and time gets worse. So that's the things we worry about. Doesn't mean you're wrong. Just means I want to see that we get to sit down with y'all and we talk about it and come up with a good solution that meets everybody's needs and is safe for y'all, too. So that's what I'm recommending that. This is not an action item, so we can put that on the next regular agenda and discuss it then.
We may move it out a little further, just so we can build the voluntary options.
Second meeting in February?
Yeah.
Okay. That work for y'all?
Yeah, we'll coordinate our offices with your offices, and we'll, we'll get it all worked out, get all the people at the table.
Thank you. It's good to have the paperwork you brought, and they did a good job.
They did a great job. They even have research to follow there, so.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. We are going into a public hearing at this time. Item number eleven is conduct a public hearing, consider, they're talking like, to consider the charter review commission's final report regarding proposed charter amendments to the city council. We're in public hearing time. It is six fifty-two. Item number eleven. If you are signed up to speak for item number eleven, now is the time. I'm looking down here to see. I've got one, twelve seventeen. All right. I have got a card from Doug Webb, who wants to speak. If you would come up and identify yourself and your address and so forth, you got three whole minutes.
Thank you. Doug Webb, one-thirty Lamar Drive, Rockport. Honorable city council, mayor, and city staff, and fellow citizens. As many of you know, I was on the charter review committee, and I tried in every way to, to protect the citizens of Rockport. I think it's just the nature of the beast that cities, council tend to take more and more control. And every time you take more control, it takes control away from us. The committee recommended many, many, some changes that will protect the citizens, and I got voted down on a bunch of others that I thought were important. From what I could learn, the Bastrop meeting had very little discussed about, about that, but much was discussed about deannexation, which I can't find on the agenda. But that will be for another day. I can understand that the city manager might want to grow, and the amount of money collected looks really good on their resume for their next opportunity. But I do not understand why the city council that has not even supplied many of the citizens with what is supposed to be provided to them would go out and, and try to get things for other people, that some of which are not even in the city. I'm asking each of you to think of, but seriously about what you would do to make the city of Rockport better for citizens, not better for developers. I believe that controlled growth is fine. This means that you have taken care of the existing citizens first. Why? Why is a really important word. Almost every answer to why is money. Why, why the city didn't give me that car that I wanted for driving back and forth that I escalate? Probably is money. That's, that's the problem. That's the answer to so many. As a citizen, I have talked to many other people, and everyone was appalled that you took a city council meeting to beautiful Bastrop. And then most of it was in executive council. I'm requesting that you provide me and the citizens the cost of what it costs for that escape from the citizens to have. Make Rockport better, not bigger. You're going to hear that a lot, I think. Thank you for your time and consideration.
All right, we've got one. Councilman Brundrett can read into the record.
Chris Heeler, Rutledge, fourteen-eleven Dana Drive. I'm asking that my city council member read my comments to the public record. I attended all the meetings of the Charter Review Commission, as I promised to the city council and Mayor Tim Jarrow. I read through all the changes to the city charter that were requested by city staff and city council members, and I submitted in writing and during oral public comments detail of my recommendations on December seventh, twenty-twenty-two, and December twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two. My typed comments were handed to the Charter Review Commission members and the city secretary, my apologies, members of the city secretary. My recommendations for amendments to the city charter include a specific language to protect citizens of Rockport and sections of the charter that would ensure rights of all citizens to adjust city council during each agenda item on individual topics that they were concerned about. My recommendations included requiring city council to call an election upon receipt of a verified petition, measures to ensure financial transparency, and more. Serious concerns were raised by Charter Review Commissioner Doug Webb. None of this was considered during the meeting in Bastrop. However, city council does not have access to my written recommendations or amendments to the charter because they are not included in the meeting minutes. It is apparent to me that city council and city staff are determined to do what they are going to do and do not wish to hear from the public who cared enough to attend all of the meetings of the Charter Review Commission. Please continue on, accept the final report, add in your predetermined amendments, and move this forward to the election.
Also, Ms. Amaya, did you want to speak again on this item?
Again, Deidra Amaya, one-on-one Windcrest Lane. I also sat the Charter Review Commission with Mr. Webb, and we did our best to represent the citizens of Rockport. It has been a very long time since that charter was updated. So there was, it, it seems like the list is very long, and some might not all agree with everything that's on that list. But it's very important for the community to be involved and to use your vote to either agree or disagree with the changes that the, the charter may or may not be updated with. So I know that the, the city council took their retreat. So I know that the, the city council took their retreat to look at all the, the changes that were recommended, and I look forward to being a part of the discussion tonight with the community, and hopefully the, the ballot this May, if it can get on the ballot this May, will represent the, the citizens. Thank you.
We have one other statement from a citizen who asked, could it be read into the record? It's much longer than three minutes will be taken care of, so at three minutes we will see that it is all entered into the record after you read what you can.
All right, this is from Nancy Bolton. She does not give an address. I would like to address the entire city council concerning Charter Review Commission's final report regarding proposed charter amendments to the city council. Section 3.01, Para 1, Para D, term limits. Please reconsider removing term limits. The argument that there are not enough interested city residents to run for office is not sound reasoning. When we have no limits on the terms of office, we limit the ability to bring in fresh ideas, different outlooks, and changing views within the community due to population shifts. There is a high concern of our city leaders to become complacent and too comfortable in their position to adequately inform in the best interest of their constituents. Our current council is doing a great job, but I would, I would not like to see the same members 20 years from now. I do agree with changing the amount of time that a member can serve on the council to longer terms than three and four years, but they should not serve longer than five years before facing an opponent. Section 3.10, Para 1, Rules of Procedure. Every citizen within the city limits that agenda items may affect or they feel strongly about should have every opportunity to address the council. If there are 10 items on the agenda that a citizen wants to comment on, then they should have that opportunity. This is the best way for citizens to have their voices heard and on the record. Section 4.01, Para 2, City Manager. I do not agree that this sentence restricts the council, but allows for them to have a definite limit on the amount of severance the city manager will receive once their contract is either expired or terminated. Severance packages can be developed and agreed upon by the council, but the amount of time should remain. If council does agree to remove the time limit, may I suggest that a standard severance package be implemented based on industry norms that do not make the sky the limit with the financial portion of the package. Negotiations left up to the city council leaves a great deal of leeway depending on the current council and limits future council if and when a city manager is terminated. Section 10.01, Organization, Article 10, Planning and Zoning. Although I believe the council is acting in good faith, but I do not agree that eliminating P&amp;Z and using only ordinances to make decisions is taking away a citizen or entity's ability to be represented by a member within their board. P&amp;Z also acts as a buffer to review requests, ask questions, and work with the citizen entity on a more personal level before bringing the request to council for consideration. The time allotted toward P&amp;Z requests needs to be considered, and more research done to locate cities that work off our ordinances alone. I would, I would question if these cities have full-time mayors or council members. Section 10.03, The Comprehensive Plan, Article 10. As stated from the conception of the new comp plan, it is for guidance and provides the city a roadmap of what was envisioned by the main participating citizens during the time it was created. The plan is your guide to create ordinances and having time to allow citizen input before creating these ordinances. It is-
All right, Mr. Webber.
Rutledge, please. Yes, I'd like to yield more time to Councilwoman Jackson to finish the statement.
How much you got left? Okay.
So, I'm gonna restart on section 10.03. As stated from the conception of the new comp plan, it is for guidance and provides the city a roadmap of what was envisioned by the many participating citizens during the time it was created. The plan is your guide to create ordinances and having time to allow citizen input before creating these ordinances. It is the citizens' syllabus of where we see our city in the future. It is also a central location to citizens to review all the other plans incorporated into the comp plan, such as the Aransas County Long-Term Recovery Plan and Report, Aransas County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan and Flood Plan Management Plan, and the Recovery Planning Assistance Team Report. Rather than creating many new ordinances to accomplish what this particular council finds important, please use the comp plan as a guide to create ordinances of value based on almost two years' worth of research input. In the past year, the council has reviewed, updated, or created ordinances pertaining to RV parks with the assistance of the RV park owners, golf carts, and now short-term rentals with the assistance and input from owners and citizens. All of these items were listed as part of the comp plan. Lastly, the downtown heritage arts district is referenced many times as part of our revitalization. Sincerely, Nancy Bolton, 201 Spanish words.
Thank you. We had two statements from one individual, one related to item number that we were working on right now, and it was just read. I only had one of these pieces of paper. The other one was on citizens to be heard on an agenda, on something that was not an agenda item. We're going to read that now.
Christie Rutledge, 1411 Dana Drive. I am not able to attend this meeting tonight due to work. I ask that my Ward III council representative read my comments, and that meeting minutes reflect my entire statement. Mayor Tim Jarrow and council members, we are all very surprised and dismayed that you would take the January 12th meeting of City Rockport Council three hours away to Bastrop, Texas. Outside the reach of the public, you are in the office to serve. I listened to the audio recording of the meeting in Bastrop, and many things were decided and agreed to. Lengthy deliberations were held, consensus was reached, and decisions were made on standard contracts. How, why the city will fight petitions for deannexation, and contents of the election for amendments to the city charter. On November 8th, following a joint meeting of city council, Charter Review Commission, Mayor, you approached me, looked me in the eye, put out your hand, and said, "I never thought I would say this, but thank you," and you repeated again, "thank you." You were thanking me for my professionalism and cooperation with the charter review process. You can imagine my surprise and my complete sorrow to hear Mayor Tim Jarrow initiate and carry out a very lengthy and hurtful conversation about me in Bastrop when section 3.10 came up for discussion. Mayor Jarrow spread outright lies about me, lies which were repeated by another city council member. Mayor Tim Jarrow admitted in Bastrop that his effort to smear my good name started in his election, and he had conversations about me in a January 11th meeting with leadership of Aransas County, a Chamber of Commerce training program. During Jarrow's election on March 23rd, 2022, a very unfortunate editorial was written that compared me to Jim Jones. It certainly seems like a coordinated effort to hurt me and my family. I am asking that you publicly, Mayor Tim Jarrow, and all city council members, cease and desist your defamation of my character that threatens my ability to work and live in this community.
Next item on the agenda in the public hearing is number 12, conduct a public hearing to consider a request to rezone property located at 407 West Market Street, also known as Doughty and Mathis Block 200, lots 1 through 3, the westerly portion of lots 9 through 11, the easterly portion, Rockport, Aransas County, Texas, to B1, General Business District, to allow the use of a new shop currently zoned R1, First Single Family Dwelling District. We have, we have folks that signed up for this. I have a note, doesn't show a last name, it says Jane. If, when you get up, if you give your name and your address before you give us what you have to say, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
For the record, it was likely illegible. Good evening, city council members and, and mayor, I'm Jane Bash, 124 South Doughty, and I'm commenting on item number 12. As lots are being converted from the residential properties to commercial zonings, there are a number of considerations that affect the charm, health, and peace for the residences and businesses alike. The property on Market Street has a potential of creating after-hours noise decibels above what is acceptable for the city of Rockport, and there may be changes to the flow of waters. We are well aware that the flood area that kind of straddles the county and the city can be adversely affected once properties are developed as well. It's also possible that there could be septic leakage or other hazardous chemicals that could eventually be found in our groundwaters, and the neighbors around the property being discussed are all concerned that the zoning will be too quickly, the zoning would be too quick to not investigate our concerns, as evidenced by the deposit of the building materials which were already on the property for the construction of that, that potential commercial property. Thank you.
Bash?
Mayor, city council, thank you for allowing us to speak today. As my wife stated, we, we do have some concerns, but one thing I'd like to say first is I commend the gentleman back, everybody, for going forward and trying to do their best and, and expand his business. I think it's wonderful he's doing so, and I, I, I hope that him, I wish him all the luck in the world and to keep expanding. However, in saying that, over the past few years, we've, we've listened to the high-performance motor, motors being tested, you know, late into the night, and the high decibels are very disturbing and irritating to hear. At the previous meeting, at the, you know, the planning meeting, they said four times that Market Street was to be made into a corridor, that they wanted all of Market Street to be businesses all the way up to 35, Business 35. Now, if that's the case, then, you know, there's not much for us to do here. My only concern is two things. One is the noise, and two, like my wife said, the flooding. Where, where they're gonna build their business, there's a drain right in front of their business, and two, in the, in the flood of 2016, there was a city member and a, a county member for services that came out, met me out there, and he said, "Whatever you do, do not unplug that drain, because if you do, where he's gonna put his business and right across from his present business is the low spot for Market Street. If you unplug that drain, all that water from Market Street, when it floods, goes right onto my property, right across our properties, and will flood my home." It tries, the, the water goes up Doughty, down Bay Street, and then some, jaunts off some other way. My request would be, before they build the building, that they take time and make sure all the flood, all the water goes where it's supposed to go, not just put the building up and then go. We're done, you guys are on your own. So that's what I would ask. Please, you know, take the, get the engineers out there, city, state, and county, and have them talk and make sure the water goes where it's supposed to go. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Crystal Duckworth. I do live at 118 Griffith Drive. I do want to thank you guys for the opportunity to address the council today. The sole purpose of this meeting today is to request the approval for the rezoning of the western lots 1 through 3 and the eastern lots 9 through 11 portions to B1. Now, if approved, we are gonna be installing a metal building approximately 50 foot by 92 feet. It's 4,600 square feet with an awning. It will also be insulated in an enclosed shop meeting all city requirements. We have already met with engineers to complete a plan for drainage. All plans are not 100% and you cannot prevent all flooding, but we are currently working with an engineer to come up with the best drainage possible for the area. Now, in the previous meeting, some of the neighbors expressed some concerns, first being the chance to hook up to the city sewer. Unfortunately, that's not with us. It's between them and the city officials at a later time and not for zoning purposes tonight. Now, second was the noise issue. We met with the city police department and learned about the different city noise ordinance laws. Now, we are allowed 85 decibels from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM Monday through Sunday, and 80 decibels from 10:00 PM through 7:00 AM Monday through Sunday. Outside of that, officers will come out if there is a complaint and measure from the complainant's property line and also our property line. If there is an issue outside of that, then they do need to contact the police department, and we'll go from there. Definitely help work out, work with them to help with the noise problems. As they did state, yes, we do have car meets and family get-togethers from time to time, but all families do. We do, we don't do this every night, and we don't do it every week. We are all friends that grew up together here, and we all share the same love of new and old hot rods. The neighbors are always welcome to come and join us and enjoy the cars and get a plate of barbecue. Our family does a lot in the community, and they are always welcome, too, so we are always willing to sit down with them and discuss the noise issue at a later time. After some other research, there's never been a wreck in front of our shop due to any get-togethers. We do control what happens on our property. We cannot control what other people do outside of our property. The crime has always been an issue in the area, so building in this dark and overgrown empty lot will hopefully help curb some of that issue in the neighborhood. With the use of security lights and cameras, we will have extra eyes to help out, just like our other building across the street does. Lastly, it's not a factory-type of business. It's a mechanic shop, and it's designed for that overflow so we can have more mechanics in our area. With the growth of our town, another shop is gonna help relieve the stress from the other shops that are all backed up, which is gonna bring more jobs and put that money right back into our community. We've been here for 30 years, so we must be doing something right. Just, again, thank you guys for taking the time to listen to us.
Hi, thank y'all for letting me speak. My name is Betty Isbell. My husband Charlie and I own a little house on 120 South Doughty. I have the same grievances the Bash's have. Our property has 50 feet of fence that we share with Mr. Solis. That's where we get the flooding, because four properties drain into our yard and supposed to go out to market, so we're concerned with the plumbing and the noise. That, you know, when we bought here 23 years ago to retire, that was our quiet place. They're right there. When are we gonna be able to sit out there, listen to our music, barbecue, have the grandkids over? I'm concerned with the ordinance being too late, and we never have a peaceful time. And we have seven residential people in that block, and two very quiet businesses, and then what he wants to open, and y'all put, took our one-county block and put it in the city. Y'all gave us nothing but raised our taxes, and now we're gonna have this in our backyard. I know it's gonna happen, but come on, give us some peace time to enjoy our yards. We were there first, and that's really my concerns, and I appreciate it. I would like that loud noise not to continue so we can enjoy our yard as our neighbors, and of course, the flooding issue, but she said they're gonna take care of that, so hopefully that all works out, and we can all be one big happy family again. That's all we want, you know? We don't wanna have to move again, so thank y'all for considering my thoughts. Okay.
If not, we'll close the public hearing. It is 7:18, and go with the regular agenda. Next item on the agenda is item number 13, deliberate and act on first reading of an ordinance amending Article 4 of the City of Rockport zoning ordinance, number 1027, by changing the zoning of land located at 407 West Market Street, also known as Doughty and Mathis Block 200. as Doughty and Mathis Block Two Hundred, lots one through three, the westerly portion, and lots nine through eleven, the easterly portion, Rockport, Aransas County, Texas, from R1, first single-family dwelling district, to B1, general business district, to allow the use of a new shop, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing for severability and providing an effective date. There you are. Tell us about it.
This property owned by Mr. Solis is across Artistry from the other auto shop. Auto was auto loaded, charged by. Not planned, recognized, and part of the, this is what we had talked about. Mr. Solis, I'm here today.
It's because he didn't realize he had to do a rezone and had already ordered the building, and I allowed him to store it there. Now, that, the legal description is not totally correct, because he did replat to one lot, so it's lot one R, rather than all those pieces and parts. At the Planning and Zoning Commission, Mr. Solis learned that the neighbors were upset about the noise, that he didn't think that anyone had ever told him before, and so he recognizes that the revving of the engines and things cannot be late into the night. It, it will disturb everybody. But also, he tells me that, I haven't seen the plans yet, but there will be blown insulation in the, in the building, the new building, so that when they're working on their engines of their classic cars and things, you don't want a bunch of dust and sand blowing in, so it will be closed. And that should soundproof, as well as keep the air conditioning in, because the building will be totally air-conditioned, is my understanding. He's here tonight, if you have any questions for him, I'm sure he'd be glad to answer.
We're running, this problem's gonna continue down Market Street. We have a, a business corridor that backs up to a, you know, historically residential area. Unfortunately, when it was annexed, it was, it's all R1, and we have approved multiple rezones up and down Market Street, so we do recognize it as a business corridor. But, you know, what do we do for those residents, existing residences that are behind the, the corridor? I guess one of my questions would be, if we move forward with the zoning, which, you know, historically we've done up and down Market Street, prior to issuing building permits, can we confirm that, that, you know, the drainage will be taken care of?
Required to have an engineered drainage plan.
Engineered drainage plan.
For review.
Yes, ma'am.
To be approved.
So, I mean, that, that could alleviate some of the concerns if there's an engineered drainage plan, along with, it, it sounds like the noise ordinance is, is another concern. And I, I get it, you don't wanna hear loud, you know, if you're trying to sit in your backyard and listening to your music, you don't wanna hear everything else. I totally understand that. And it may just be a, a compliance issue with, with the police department, you know, a complaint wouldn't need to be made, and, and PD can come by and check the noises. And it also could be something Mr. Solis just being neighborly, another thing, you know, hey, if, if, if we're gonna be loud, you know, we're mechanic, mechanican, and we're running a little late on time, things happen, maybe this conversation we had with the neighbors, hey, sorry, we're running a little late, yada, yada, yada. Something like that could be, could go a long way. I, I foresee us continuing this issue down Market Street as we, as we continue to have these issues, the rezoning issues, but I think the engineered drainage plan may alleviate some of the concerns as, as far as flooding goes. And I do agree, we, it was annexed, and we haven't provided much, other than more taxes, but we'll get there eventually, hopefully.
Anyone else? Planning and zoning heard this when?
Last month sixteen.
And their decision was?
To approve. I believe it was a vote of five to two. Yeah, five to two.
Any further questions? Yes, if you would like to come address us, please do.
Uh, Richard Solis, I live at eight oh six Hernley. First, I understand where they're coming from. We do make a lot of noise, but also we work a lot of hours, fix a lot of cars, do a lot of stuff for the community. The building is gonna be fully insulated. I don't wanna work out in the heat no more, I'm old. And that's just pretty much where we're going. We're gonna be doing more different things than we did before, kinda nice, clean area is, this is what it's mostly about. And I am sorry for the noise, I can't control everybody. The ones that I do control is, you know, we sit down and ate barbecue that night, like she said last weekend. My dad passed away two years, and we had a get-together, ate some barbecue, and let us play a game of foosball. I don't see that's nothing too crazy. We were home by eleven-thirty, twelve o'clock. In the flooding thing, if you have any, like I said, I paid a lot of money for the drainage plan that they're building for us, and if you have any other questions, just let me know, and I'll answer anything.
Anything else, council?
With condition, conditional approval on the, the noise, is there any other recommendations from staff that y'all would wanna see, anything different than our current noise ordinance?
Well, I don't believe you can put a conditional use on a zoning. Once you zone it, it's zoned.
Right.
Yeah. But the noise ordinance, I mean, I don't know, the decibels, I don't know if they're too high, I don't, I don't know what eighty-five decibel sounds like.
Any decibels is by twenty-two long rifle shot.
I know what that sounds like.
Captain, what violations of the noise ordinance, is this meter, is it similar?
Yeah, it's a, it's a classy misdemeanor.
Okay. And are you allowed to get so many of them before it's a nuisance property, or, I'm not familiar with the ordinance.
Uh, so basically, the ordinance, I mean, if, you have to have, we have to have a complainant, if so many complaints, and we go out with the, and do the, take the meter, and the breeding has to be from the complainant's property line, so it's not from the business's property line, it's from who is actually complaining. It has to be over that eighty-five decibels from their line, they're from their property, not from the business. So, it does, a lot of times, I said, it doesn't quite meet that. I mean, we can still, we can still write the citation, if they're, if they're willing to sign the complaint, saying that, that it is a nuisance to them, and it's, they find it disorderly, then we write, we can write a citation on their complaint, but in order for the, for the officer to write it under the city ordinance, it's gotta be above that, that decibel range.
Okay. Any other questions?
It seems to me that we have a, a set of neighbors and a business owner who are willing to work together if they actually talk to each other. And I've seen a whole bunch of heads go this way. So, keep the lines of communication open, all right? That's the best thing for neighbors to do, because, I mean, I love the idea of bringing more jobs into the city, keeping more money here instead of going off somewhere else. And believe me, I completely understand a quiet porch at sunset, you know, having a drink, whatever you're doing. I, I understand both sides. So, as long as you got, I, the way that I see it, as long as you guys keep talking and paying attention to each other and going, oh, am I, am I, is this too much? There's your answer right there. So, that's my comment.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
The noise and that, I, I know that, what you just said, and I agree with it a hundred percent, and we will reach out to him and vice versa, I hope. The biggest thing now is the flooding, and then, you know, and I know he's put a bunch of money into, to make sure that his, his property is going to be above floodplain and everything else. Now, I don't know if, if that equates to where that water and market's supposed to go to, or if it's just make, making sure that he's high enough that he's not gonna flood. I'm not pointing fingers, and don't get me wrong when I'm talking here. I'm, I'm worried more about where does all that water go? You know, I'm, he's gonna be high enough, I understand that, but the rest of that water, where's it go? And the engineering plan, is county, city, and state gonna be involved to make sure that that water goes somewhere else other than, I can show you videos of where it went last time. It wasn't, it was ugly on my case, so, that's my, that's my question.
And, and obviously, like someone said a little while ago, what we're talking about tonight is zoning. There has to be a building permit, there has to be engineering work done and so forth, so that would take place down the road. So, again, the question tonight is whether the zoning changes. Carrie?
Well, the engineered plan is not really about the height of his building. In Texas, you cannot adversely affect your neighbor's property with your drainage. No more property can drain off than it did prior. They have to do an engineered plan that directs that water to a drainage source, to the highway ditch, to something else. It cannot drain onto your property. Natural flow is natural flow, but once he builds, the only thing that can naturally flow is what it did before, not more. So, the engineered plan will address that, and it will, it will take that water to where it's supposed to go, so that it does not adversely affect the neighboring properties. And that's what our engineers will review.
Any other questions, comments? Do I have a motion?
I move to approve item thirteen as presented.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or debate? Call for vote, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Motion passes. Item number fourteen on the agenda, deliberate and act on second final reading of an ordinance authorizing the closing, vacating, and abandonment of a twenty-foot alleyway lying between lots one through three and lots nine through eleven, one oh eight Manning Addition, City of Rockport, Aransas County, Texas, providing for the terms and conditions of such vacation and abandonment, authorizing the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed for the twenty-foot wide alleyway to be closed, vacated, and abandoned, and providing for an effective date. This is the second reading, has anything changed since, have nothing changed since the first reading?
Motion to approve agenda, item fourteen is presented.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion or debate? Ward one.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Passes. Item number fifteen, deliberate and act on second final reading of an ordinance authorizing the closing, vacating, and abandonment of a forty-foot wide, platted, unimproved right-of-way located between blocks twenty-one and twenty-two, TP McCampbell subdivision, being zero point eight nine three acre, City of Rockport, Aransas County, Texas, providing for the terms and conditions of such vacation and abandonment, authorizing the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed for the forty-foot wide, platted, unimproved right-of-way to be closed, vacated, and abandoned, and providing for an effective date. The second reading, any change since last? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve, item fifteen is presented.
I have a second. I have a motion and a second to approve as presented. Any further discussion or debate? Ward one.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Item number sixteen, deliberate and act on second final reading of an ordinance authorizing the closing, vacating, and abandonment of a forty-foot wide, platted, unimproved right-of-way located between blocks twenty and twenty-one, TP McCampbell subdivision, being two point two seven seven acres, City of Rockport, Aransas County, Texas, providing for terms and conditions of such vacation and abandonment, authorizing the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed for the forty-foot wide, platted, unimproved right-of-way to be closed, vacated, and abandoned, and providing for an effective date. Any changes? We have no changes. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve, item number sixteen as presented.
I have a motion, I have a second. I have a motion, second. Any further question or debate? Not Ward one.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Item number seventeen, which we did earlier.
Mayor, I have a question on item that we've already, we've already approved. Number thirteen, do we need to change, do I need to amend that motion to, to meet the current plating?
Yeah, a lot more.
It's okay, as far as what the ordinance, okay.
All right. Reports from council.
First of all, I'm gonna do one for, for. Councilwoman Haleson, she is not here. A and H Show for the kids in the county, for both Aransas County and San Patricio County is currently going on at the fairgrounds in Sinton. A lot of awards have already gone out for various things about horses and horsemanship and riding and all kinds of fun stuff. If you get a chance, go out there. These kids put a lot of time and effort. There's the animals, I particularly like going and watching the hogs, because that's bacon on the hoof walking by. Homemaking, sewing, photographs, welding, all kinds of stuff. Go out there, give, give the kids some of your time and take a look at what they've done. Now, unto me. There's not much going on in the ward right now. I think we're taking a deep breath before we get closer to spring break. Other than that, Ward one's quiet right now, and I like it that way. Oh!
Go ahead.
Wait, wait. Thursday, seventeen thirty, five thirty, at the American Legion at seventeen oh one South Church Street is the last short-term rental meeting. Will be there with bells on, looking for input from anybody across the city who wants to attend. Once again, that's Thursday at five thirty at the American Legion in the public entrance, South seventeen, seventeen oh one South Church Street.
We had a STR meeting held at the Allegro House, whatever that date was. Very, very well attended, and there was good feedback presented from both, I guess you would call it both sides, but a, a lot of, a lot of information was given, and I highly encourage anyone to attend the last meeting, if possible, in, at the American Legion. Some good information, and we're, we're really relying on the, the citizenry, the stakeholders of the community to, to, to give, give us some input, what y'all wanna see in our ordinance. We don't, we don't wanna come up with this ordinance by ourselves, we, we'd rather come from y'all, and let's see what the community wants in a, in a short-term rental. You know, we, we have other entities around us, other communities around us, that I think we can learn from, and, and where we wanna go, how we wanna see Rockport. So, I, I really would, really would like to solicit some more input from the citizens on that. It is also available online, correct, our little questionnaire is available online on the city website. You fill it out, and, and Carrie'll get it, and we'll, we'll, I guess, start the process or continue the process.
It'll be available till the end of the month.
Till the end of the month?
Yeah.
Okay. So, have all your feedback in by the end of the month, if you can, and, and attend this last meeting, and, and just, if you can't attend meetings, let, let either city staff or, or your council member, give us your, your input. That's all I have.
Ward four?
Three and a half.
Three and a half, it is all we tonight, there. Ward four, we had our STR meeting last Tuesday. Mayor was kind enough to fill in for me from schedule conflict, but I heard it went well. It was well-attended, with really well, good questions, so thank you for my word, people showing up and getting those questions out there. I do appreciate that. And then, second, Mike, do you have an update on any of the drainage pipe going in on the country club? Is there anything new, or is?
They've, they've done most of the groundwork and the pipework, and they are focusing on the ponds. They're having some issues with the slurry coming out of the ponds, and they're looking for an alternative method for transporting it to the area where it's being laid out. But the, the project is on time and on budget, and we're looking forward to possibly having some funds available to continue to clean out some of the other ponds that were not part of the original project.
Great, thank you. And that'd be all for my word. Thank you.
There has been a lot of interest in the. Short-term rental questions that have come up, so if you are interested in that thing and you haven't attended one of these meetings, it's good. The one at the country club was well-attended, there were probably eighty, ninety people there, and a lot of questions from folks wanting to know just exactly what it was we were talking about, what it was we were talking about trying to do, and it was very well-reacted on by the people that were there. A lot of questions, and we had a lot of good comments, and it worked out well. I have nothing else. City council will hold executive session pursuant to provisions of Chapter five fifty-one of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in Section five five one, point zero seven one, consultation with attorney seeking the advice from the state. point zero-seven-one, consultation with attorney, seeking the advice from attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct to State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter. Burnside, number one's Burnside Services, Inc., number two, Concho Street Drainage Project, number three, Barack Kumar Patel and Kalik Mura Patel versus the City of Rockport. We are in executive session. It is seven-thirty-eight. How much is for that? Do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We're done.
Yeah, close, close.
Yes, the close, the closed session that I said was going on is not gonna go on, so it is seven-thirty-nine, and we're in regular session, we're adjourned.
You seconded anybody?